You're up.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept Ms. Hellreich's resignation? Maybe not like to, but would you?
I-
Ms. Sobel?
I will. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education accept the resignation of Kathy Hellreich as chairperson.
Do we have any discussion? Second, Mr. Perigini, discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, Ms. Hellreich. At this point, I'd like to call for any nominations for chairperson of the Board of Education?
Mr. Solan, I would like to nominate Ms. Fabiani for chairperson.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Ms. Sobel? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? We have a- We have a second call already, right, for Ms. Sobel? We have a- Apologize. So we have a second motion for Ms. Fabiani. I'll distribute ballots for the chair of the Board of Education. I ask that you please complete each ballot and the vote will be called. The ballots will be available for review after we have the election. Yeah, they have your name on them. Sorry. Toni, do you have your name on it? Yeah. Marlena.
Thank you.
Nita. No. Just initial it. I'd ask that you please pass your ballots back in. Mr. Grippo?
Mr. Solan, although there are no other nominations, I just wanted to point out that you did not call for any other nominations. Just as a point of order.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'll read the votes. Kathryn Fabiani, Kathryn Fabiani, Kathryn Fabiani, Kathryn Fabiani, Kathryn Fabiani, and an abstention. So the votes are six in favor of Ms. Fabiani and one abstention. The motion carries. Ms. Fabiani, you're our new chair. Congratulations. Yes, we still are in. Yeah, we have to vote for vice chair. So I can do. So I'd like to call for any nominations of vice chair. Ms. Sobel?
I nominate Ann Harrigan as vice chair.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second call?
A second for the nomination.
Second call for nominations, please. Okay, we have a third call for nominations. Okay, hearing none. The nominations are now closed. I'll distribute the ballots. Your names are on these ballots. Ms. Vadi abstains. Mr. Grippo, none. Ms. Harrigan, for Ann Harrigan. Ms. Fabiani, Ann Harrigan. Anthony Perigini, abstention. Marlena Sobel, Ann Harrigan. Kathy Hellreich for Ann Harrigan. The tally of the votes are four votes for Ms. Harrigan and two abstentions and a none. So Ms. Harrigan, the motion carries that you are our new vice chair. Congratulations. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. Mr. Grippo, do we have a second? Ms. Hellreich, all vote for approval? Mr. Perigini? Yeah, it's unanimous. Seven to zero. Thank you. The organizational meeting is now adjourned. Chair, yeah. She will at some point.
I'd like to call this business meeting of the Board of Education to order. Mrs. Jazinski, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Fabiani?
Here.
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Ms. Hellreich?
Here.
Ms. Perigini?
Here.
Ms. Sobel?
Here.
Ms. Fabiani?
Here.
And I'm chair of the board.
Thank you. Can everyone please stand and join me in the pledge? Ledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We will be hearing now from our student representatives. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I want to start off today by recapping some of the things we missed from last month because of the last meeting being canceled. We hosted annually our career fair for sophomores with members from the community and many teachers at our high school as well. One of our fellow, one of our best friends and a senior at high school, Jenny Wang, was awarded the Congressional Medal presented by Congresswoman Elizabeth Esti. It was based on earning 100 hours of community service and setting goals to improve herself academically, physically, and personally. The National Honor Society hosted a college fair the day before Thanksgiving break, inviting many of our alumni to come back and represent their schools for juniors and seniors to learn about. The superintendent's award was awarded to seven different seniors from Cheshire High School, and that was a while ago as well. And includes many of our friends as well. A few weeks ago, members of the state, the Student Advisory Board to the State Board of Education, about eighteen to twenty students from across the state who were selected by the State Board of Education to serve as an advisory council on certain issues that the CIAC wants to focus on. They visited Cheshire High School and shadowed many of our classrooms with the goal, ultimate goal of their work is to figure out how to increase diversity in the teaching profession and how to address certain areas of the teaching profession that lack minority representation. One of our fellow students, Yasen Terabar, is a member of that board, which is part of the reason why they came to Cheshire High School as well. And then the Fall Play, that always happens, has run its course. It was sweet surrender. I heard it was a great success as well. And then, of course, the Apple Valley Classic occurred on Thanksgiving, and unfortunately, we did lose, although we were up by thirteen points in the first quarter. And then there is, there was an alumni gathering on November 21st in Hamden at Enchiladas at four o'clock. And then for events coming up, next week is our second Cheshire Chat of the Year, a new program run by Dr. Gad. This Cheshire Chat will focus on a speaker from the Yale Medical School who works at the Tobacco Research Clinic for youth. Her presentation will be on the effects of vaping, especially and what her research has shown. The chorus and band concerts are coming up. So the chorus concert is next week, and the band and orchestra concerts are the week after that. And those will be, the chorus concert, I believe, starts at 6:00 PM. The chorus concert was on Tuesday, I apologize. And the band concert is, I believe, on the 18th, yeah, and starts at 7:30, 7:30, yeah. Winterfest, I think it's the third or fourth annual, I'm not, I'm not certain. But Winterfest is this December 15th or so, next Saturday. And it'll be hosted again at Cheshire High School in the Commons in the cafeteria for the children in the community. The staff, there's something been going on among the CHS staff and the faculty, which is something new we can bring to you. It's called Kart Wars. A lot of them, we've seen it, we've seen it around for the last couple of days. We didn't really know what was going on until Dr. Gad updated us. But a lot of the karts that they use for equipment have been decorated in lots of Christmas fashions with like, you know, reindeers and snowmen and whatnot. And there was a competition going on in the library, so those have all been judged. So it's a lot, little, little bit of festivity for you. On December 13th, the Third Annual Joy of Giving Conference in the Cheshire High School Library will be run by Mr. Lee. It's open to CHS students, and every student must bring a non-perishable food item as a ticket, as a donation. And then Link Crew will be running cocoa and cramb for freshmen on January 5th. It's to help them prepare for their first high school midterms. And then that is it for non-sports activities at the high school. So I'll pass the mic to Ally.
So a little bit of a consolidation between last meeting's news and this meeting's. So the Cheshire Athletic Department received a CIAC Michael's Cup Award, and the award was presented to schools for success in athletic performance, academic sportsmanship, and participation. The fall teams, all Cheshire High School fall teams had a great season with boys soccer, girls volleyball, girls swimming, and field hockey all winning division titles. The girls swim team won the Class L championship for the second year in a row. The team was runner-up in the state open championship, making them the number-two swim team in the state. And the girls field hockey team competed in the state championship finals but lost to number-one Staples of Westport. The field hockey team ended up being ranked number-two in the state on the field hockey poll. And all winter sports have now begun. The captains went on a little retreat today, which sounded really fun. And the first contest for winter sports will take place on Wednesday, December 12th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for our student reps? Thank you so much. Okay. I believe we now have a nice event, a school partnership award will be presented by Ms. Sobel.
Good evening. At this evening's meeting, the recipient of the school partnership award for Chapman School is Mr. Kevin Thompson. I'm assuming that's you.
Yes.
Excellent. Mr. Thompson has been a volunteer at, has been a volunteer Chapman School mentor for nine years. He has touched the life of, the lives of many mentees in his years of dedication to the Chapman School Volunteer Mentoring Program. Principal Burns stated they are impressed with his enthusiasm and his ability to access each child's needs and capabilities. The Chapman School Mentor Program is school-based. Students meet with their mentors on school grounds during the school day. The success of a school-based mentoring program is dependent upon the support of volunteers. Mentoring is a one-on-one relationship between a child and a caring adult. Mr. Thompson has helped students appreciate who they are while developing the skills they need to succeed. He has been a friend who visits the students for one hour once a week during the school day. The goal of the program is to establish a trusting relationship, a friendship, and for the child to have a positive role model he or she can count on. There is no curriculum or educational goal. Kevin has been an outstanding role model for Chapman's students. Mentors have been found to be one of the most important factors for student success, and he has worked with some of Chapman's most challenging students. Mr. Thompson has proven to be a caring and competent individual who thrives in an environment that provides frequent challenges and demands highly-developed communication skills. His mentees are very appreciative of his help and guidance. Most importantly, he has a passion for helping others. Even with his busy work schedule and two young children of his own, Kevin makes time to mentor every week. That's very admirable, every week. That's a huge time commitment. He is very responsible and dependable, always informing the volunteer coordinator and his mentee if he needs to reschedule. He made a one-year commitment to work with one mentee and has touched many lives over the past nine years. He has been involved in training programs, regular meetings, and recruiting Webster Bank mentors. Kevin is a very positive support to the Chapman School Mentoring Program. He has built a solid, helpful relationship with each of his mentees and works hard to meet their needs and to reinforce their passions. He has the ability to bring out the best in children. He celebrates the mentees' strengths and achievements and is a very strong role model. He is always positive, caring, and respectful. His high energy level, intelligence, and personal integrity enable him to guide our children. Chapman is proud to honor Mr. Kevin Thompson with the Cheshire Public Schools Partnership Award. And the Board of Education, thanks, Mr. Thompson, for going above and beyond for the students of Cheshire.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hellreich, do you have a motion for us?
I do, Ms. Chair. I make a motion that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held October 18th, 2018.
Is there a second? Ms. Harrigan? Is there any discussion, corrections, issues? No? Okay, seeing none. The motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held October 18th, 2018. All in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Vadi, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held November 1st, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Hellreich? Any corrections, comments? Seeing none. The motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held November 1, 2018. All those in favor? Any abstentions? Mr. Perigini? Thank you. Mr. Perigini, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, I do not have any written correspondence. I believe we all got an email today from Mr. Bestor. But I have not, I literally just saw you walk in, so I'm not in a position to read it. I suggest we read it next meeting, into the record. It's okay with you?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Solan, would you like to give us your report?
Thank you. Ally and Ann really stole a lot of thunder. There's a lot going on over the last two months, and apparently, they're hanging out with all the right people, too, because they, you know, all of their friends were honored and acknowledged. They did talk a little bit about the Superintendent's Awards Banquet, which was held during American Education Week, and they referenced seven Cheshire High School students. But I also want to add that four Dod Middle School students and many elementary school students were recognized also that evening. It's a great night to celebrate our students and not just recognize our students for their academic achievements, but also their character and their contributions to our community. So it was really an outstanding event, and I congratulate all of our honorees from this year. Many updates over the past, over the summer, I guess, and into the fall. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education worked with us to conduct a thorough review of our policy manual. And so, over the course of the next several months, I'm sure you'll see many policies coming before you as we, our, our policy committee works through some of those policies and recommendations. Some of them are, are really minor in terms of just updating a date because laws changed and they had to update the date. But others are, are more substantial. So we'll be going through that over the course of the next several months, I'm sure. Last night, the Connecticut Teacher of the Year Awards Ceremony was held at the Bushnell in Hartford. I had the honor of attending with our Connecticut, or Cheshire Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kristin Castellano, who's a literacy support teacher at Dod Middle School. And she represented us incredibly well, and we're very proud of her. If you want to see more information about Kristin and see the speech she gave at our convocation, it's available on our website under the Curriculum Department. I encourage you to check that out. It was really a pretty amazing speech. Over the last couple of months, we, our district and many kids in our community, as well as staff, participated to support the Cheshire Food Drive. I'm sure you've heard Ms. Sobel talk about it on many occasions. And we collected literally thousands of food items and thousands in money to contribute right at the right time before the Thanksgiving season. You want to give a specific shout-out to Dod Middle School because they were able to gather so many food items that they filled an entire bus, school bus, full of food. And it was really amazing to see the looks on everybody's face when we pull up with a full busload of food. It was really pretty amazing, and I just thank everybody, not just our staff and students across the district, but the families who helped contribute to our community food drive. Thank you. Our communication survey has been out. We have a group, a steering committee, working to review that information around our district communications. It's an area we're continuously looking at improving and trying to figure out how do we reach more people and connect with more folks in our community. I want to thank the more than 800 people in Cheshire who responded to our communication survey, and I look forward to sharing that group's goals as we move forward in the coming months. Our personalized learning task force, I also appreciate everybody who provided feedback around our draft vision of the graduate and our draft of personalized learning. We received a lot of great feedback from the community on that. And at our next meeting, we'll be reviewing that feedback and draft, and finalizing those two drafts and hopefully bringing them before you shortly thereafter. I've shared on a few occasions that our administrative team has been engaged in learning walks throughout the district with the specific effort of focusing on student work around complex thinking. We have two marquee goals in our school system, one being the development of complex thinking and the other, the development of social-emotional learning. So our administrative team has been focused on walking through buildings and examining the work that students are doing with an eye toward improving the frequency and depth of complexity that the, that the students are asked to engage in. So that has been very fruitful for our administrative team in terms of our own learning. And we look very much forward to January when we start engaging teachers in that process. And they'll be walking on, walking into classrooms of their peers and providing the opportunity to provide feedback there for how to improve complex thinking in the classroom. So that's something that we've been working on for a long time, and we really think that it'll provide significant dividends for our staff learning. So finally, I want to, I know you've been made aware already, but acknowledge our Assistant Superintendent, Sean Parkhurst, who has resigned and is moving on to become the Superintendent of the Windsor Locks Public Schools. Congratulations, Sean. In his absence, we were able to secure a pretty familiar name in Don Wolonis. He was the principal at Dod Middle School for more than 16 years and is incredibly knowledgeable about our school system. And will do a tremendous job working in our curriculum office along with our K-8 curriculum coordinator, Ms. Marlene Solano, who's done an outstanding job in her first year. So it's, it'll be a great team, and we'll post for Sean's replacement sometime in late winter, early spring with the objective of hiring somebody to begin on July 1st. So. Any questions on that pretty thorough report, two months' worth? Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I would just like to say that I was, I and a number of the other members of the board attended the Superintendent's Award Dinner, and it was really, it's always pretty inspiring to see these children honored. And the thing that came through really across the board was that every single student who was being honored, one of the, the things that was pointed out was their commitment to, you know, their commitment to their fellow students and, and the care that they exhibit for, you know, everyone around them and their service to each other. It was just really, I mean, this was from elementary school all the way up to high school. And so they're, I'm sure their parents are very proud, but we're all very proud of them as well. So I just wanted to mention that. Anybody else have anything to share?
So just to comment, I was at the Superintendent's Award Dinner, too, and I felt the same thing. I was so humbled by these students and so impressed exactly by their caring for one another, their respect for one another, and community service. It was, it was really inspiring. So, you know, I appreciate all the work that went into that, and I thought the teachers did a fabulous job selecting students, and it was wonderful to see the students select teachers that have inspired them. So all around, I said, you know, congratulations was a well, a great evening, and congratulations to all the students and parents. Really well done. And then also, can I just add to Mr. Parkhurst? We will miss you. Thank you for everything you've done for us. And good luck.
I also attended the Superintendent's Awards Dinner. It's always a nice evening from, from the students who do a phenomenal job, to the teachers that they, they bring with them, to our food services people who put on a phenomenal dinner, to Mrs. Jazinski and Kyla who arrange it all. It's just, it's just a wonderful night all around. Mr. Parkhurst, we are going to miss you. You haven't been here long, and I told you, I knew at some point that you would be moving up to a higher, to a higher position, but I just didn't think it would be quite this early. But I wish you a lot of luck. I know it's an amazing opportunity for you, and when I put on my mommy hat, that's what we want for, for all of our, for all of our children and for, for people that we work with, for them to attain what they, the highest that they can and what they would like to do. So congratulations in that.
Hi, I just want to acknowledge, it's with mixed feelings that I am sending Mr. Parkhurst on to his next, his next adventure in a different school district. I have appreciated your work ethic and just the way that you approach everything with care, caring and professionalism. You will be missed. I hope, you're not going too far. So I hope we will stay in touch and our paths will cross, I'm sure.
I will echo all-
I will echo all of the things that everyone said. We will miss you, but good luck. You're going to do a great job, I'm sure. Thank you. Okay, so I guess we'll move on to the committee reports. Ms. Harrigan, do you have a report on curriculum?
I sure do. So Monday, November 12th, in the Hummiston Boardroom, was the November Curriculum Committee Meeting. And several things were accomplished, which I will go over in, in, pretty briefly. We were introduced with a program of study changes in the education, Business Education Department at Cheshire High School. It was really wonderful to see Ms. McCary and Ms. Talon presented us with the several course changes over the past several years because we asked them to sort of elaborate on how far the program has come. It's really wonderful to see how that Business Education Program has evolved over the past several years at Cheshire High. And even more wonderful to see the excitement and the commitment behind these teachers and educators who were presenting the changes to the Board of Ed, to the Curriculum Committee. Their dedication is what, what makes Cheshire Public School District what it is. And it's wonderful to see that. It's inspiring. We also looked at some new textbook recommendations. And for the science textbooks from the Science Department, those, these include, I have more detail on my, my book. HMH Science Dimensions for Grade 10. Holes Essential of Human Anatomy and Physiology for Grades 11, 12. And Forensic Science Fundamentals and Investigations for also Grades 11, 12. These were approved by the Curriculum Committee and will be on public review in the Office of Curriculum and Instruction at Hummiston, or I'm sorry, at Public Library from December, and also at Hummiston, from December 7th through adoption at the Board of Education meeting on January 17. So those are on public review, starting tomorrow, I guess. Also, under Old Business, we had a Personalized Learning Task Force update that Mr. Parkhurst provided us with. And the final thing that we took care of, what, under New Business, was an out-of-country field trip request to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands for April 9th through 19th of 2020. This is a trip that has been done, not this year, but last year, correct? And a very popular trip, as you can imagine. And I personally have heard from teachers and spouses, I guess, who have gone along as, yeah, chaperones on this trip. And I mean, the learning that takes place on a trip like this to the Galapagos is simply amazing. At any rate, so we have a motion for approval of this out-of-country field trip. Should I go ahead and make that, that motion? So I would recommend that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the participation of Cheshire High School students in the educational field trip to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands from April 9th, 2020 to April 19th, 2020, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Cheshire Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Is there a second, Ms. Sobel? Any discussion, questions?
Just a comment. I don't know that our calendar is yet set for next year. So, so this is basically April vacation, but if for some reason the date should change, the dates of this trip would change also. That's all.
Thank you for clarifying that. So the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the participation of Cheshire High School students in the educational field trip to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands, tentatively scheduled from April 9th, 2020 to April 19th, 2020, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Board of Education. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Harrigan, is that the end of your report?
That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you.
So you'd mentioned a personalized learning task force update by Mr. Parkhurst. Do you mind if we get a brief update on that as well, since I wasn't there?
Sure.
Yeah. So basically, I know Superintendent Solan just gave you that update. But basically, at the last meeting, we reviewed the feedback or the, the comments that were still lingering regarding Summit. And we split into two groups and actually dug into those comments and looked at what were further evidence to further define them a little bit further. And then at the next meeting, we're going to come back and compile those together. And that next meeting is on December 17th and look at how do we plan around that to avoid those, those missteps, miscommunication that occurred during that process.
One quick follow-up. I think Mr. Perigene had asked at the last meeting if we could have an update here on the board. Has that been planned at all? Do we know when that might be?
Yeah, I was just saying that the draft Vision of the Graduate and definition of personalized learning are being reviewed. And once that's finalized, the plan is to finalize those at the next meeting and then bring that forward to the board.
Okay. Ms. Sobel, do you have a report from Finance?
I do. Our financial report is as of November 30th, 2018. And the good news is, as reflected in a summary that you have in your packets, we are projecting to end the fiscal year in a balance. The report includes encumbrances for our largest expenditure accounts, including payroll, transportation services and outplaced tuition services. The not-so-good news is we are also reporting a continued net, a continued net negative variance in instructional programs in the amount of $230,000. As detailed in the finance, the financial report, the negative variance is primarily attributable to unforeseen overages in the special education accounts for tuition outplaced of $365,000 and pupil services of $125,000. With respect to the recently outplaced, or, oh, I'm sorry. With respect to the tuition outplaced account, the overage is due to a combination of students who were recently outplaced or were shifted to higher-cost outplaced programs. Two new students moving into Cheshire were out, who were outplaced and a new settlement agreement. The overage in pupil services is due to an increase in services provided to students with individual education plans, including medical and psychiatric evaluations, occupational speech and physical therapy and consultative services. As previously reported, we did begin the fiscal year with a district-wide limitation in place not to exceed 60% of budget for our non-payroll accounts through November. However, based on the instructional program overages that I just talked about, we are keeping that expenditure cap in place through January. As always, they will be, we will continue to carefully monitor and adjust our planned expenditures as needed to ensure we meet the annual operating budget. So, and then, any questions on that? Sure?
So there's negative $490,000 between those two pupil services, tuition, outplacement accounts. But I also noticed there's about $200,000 positive variance between instructional supply, textbooks, library. Is that because due to the freeze? And also by, what are we, what are our students missing out by not purchasing textbook? The usual stuff we do every year, which is that, those three accounts, which can never seem to gain traction.
There will be a negative impact. And the, you know, the surpluses that you're seeing there are where we're offsetting the overages in special education right now.
I'm assuming because there's $8,000, again, projected, it's going to change for textbooks. We're not purchasing textbooks where we normally would have. I guess what's impacted? What grades, what courses?
Yeah, it's not necessarily a textbook that we had planned on buying that we're not buying right now. Part of that, too, is we look at purchasing books when we have enrollment counts. So if we're looking at in January, when students are enrolling in high school classes, when things fluctuate, we just hold off and try and determine, all right, well, how many do we need to buy and per class? And we're pretty calculated about that, rather than overbuying and leaving some on the shelf behind.
So my assumption is not really, it's not valid that we're not buying textbooks because of?
Yeah, just because the account says textbooks, it includes other items like workbooks and things. It's, it's not that, you know, our kids are sitting there without resources right now. We're just really prudent as to what we can not purchase at the moment, what's not absolutely critical for the moment. And we just kind of withhold that and read what happens with things like tuition outplacements and like, like we do every year.
Yeah, thanks for correcting my assumption. Thank you.
Marlena, I do, following up on what Tony was just asking, the textbooks I get. But what about science supplies and that? Are we still purchasing what we need for science?
Yeah, anything that's critically curricular-related, we make those purchases. And our department chairs know that this is really the, the process on an annual basis. So when we allocate that 60% of that account, they understand that, all right, what are the critical items that we need right now to make sure that we can educate our students and make sure they get the most out of that experience? So they purchase that out of that 60%. And then there are other things that, you know, we consider valuable and important that we hold off, but they're not critical in the moment. Probably things that arise in the spring supplies. And then what happens is, you know, as spring rolls around, we start to take a look at, all right, well, what's critical out of this department, out of that department? Who's got how much left in this account, that account? And, you know, we have to do, I wouldn't call it horse trading, but prioritizing at each level and make those purchases. Our kids don't go without critical things that they need until things get really dire. And then we would talk about that, but that, that is something that we work very diligently to plan for and avoid.
It is hard to make plans, especially in areas like special education, where there's just so much that needs to be mandated and needs to be done. And you can't, you can't decide that at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I can't dictate who moves in and out of our community.
And it can't be budgeted for if they-
If you don't know it exists.
Exactly. Any other questions with that? Would you like to give a medical benefits update, Mr. Maciano?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Board members do have the medical benefits report as of October 31st. I will highlight a couple of areas. If you remember, when we did the report back in September, we were, I had noted that the claims for September were 512,000, certainly well below our $725,000 expectation. And I explained that there were some issues with, with the reporting we received from Anthem. In October, we had a reverse. And so you'll see that the claims for October were $1,059,698, so well above our threshold. So I believe what, what happened is what I had explained in September, that because of the change in reporting at Anthem, they reported less weeks in September and an additional week in October. On a year-to-date basis, the net claims has taken our trust fund balance down by about $394,000. It's still healthy. We're $3.6 million, so we have five months in claims reserve. We do expect that balance to drop further because we did reduce our medical benefits contribution budget for this fiscal year. You know, with that said, at the bottom of the report, I will note that our year-to-date claims are averaging $803,000 per month against an expected $725,000 per month. So we are running kind of hot right now. So we'll continue to keep our eye on it and always hope for the best when it comes to claims. That's the report. Thank you.
Just a quick question for the October one. So September was three weeks and October roughly. You're assuming September was like three weeks and October was, was five weeks. That's half a million dollars in five weeks. I mean, in two weeks, that difference.
If you average those two months, you're at $750,000, so yes. We are, there's no doubt, we're running, on a year-to-date basis, we're running above the expectation. So, so claims are running a little bit higher than we, we had, you know, budgeted. And, and we budget based on the actuarial assumptions we receive, you know, from Anthem and confirmed by our benefits consultant.
I have a question. Would it be correct to assume that we do get more claims in the later months of the, of the year?
We do. As a general statement, we do. This is an unusually high, you know, October, but if you balance it out against September, it's not quite as bad. And you'll continue to see claims running relatively high till December because as we've gotten further in the year, our HSA plan year ends in December. So people who have met their deductible, as we hit the fall, those claims come directly against the board's claim, claim pool. And then in January, February, March, we do see a drop-off. So we hope not to see that trend once we hit the new fiscal, well, the new calendar year.
Thank you.
Quick note. So I work for Health Insurance, I won't say the name, but what Ann's asking is typical. So as folks try to maximize out-of-pocket deductions for year-end, start kicking in for benefits, it's not unusual to see this spike up a little bit. I can't speak for the clients, sorry, but we're seeing similar pattern in claims experience. For the ASO administrative services only folks, so fortunately it's not out of the norm. Unfortunately, it's getting more expensive. On the last report you got from Anthem, you said it was missing detail, if I'm mistaken?
The, they-
The reporting structure has changed and it's gotten worse.
Why it changed, I'm not going to say publicly why, but there's something going on there. But, but are you not starting to get the detail behind the claims experiences or it's not quite there yet?
The detail's there. You just have to edit manually, which is, again, sounds nutty. And as I explained in September. But it does require a lot more work on the part of our staff to arrive at the monthly claim total.
Have they been responsive that they're going to adjust that or is that basically going to be the status quo?
It's been a struggle to get them to provide what we need. You know, we're getting there slowly. And as I explained, you know, we, we did go out to bid. And those, those bids are backed. There's a meeting scheduled for the 19th to review the bids. And this would be to look at, you know, costs of different carriers besides Anthem. And it's part of our typical process. It wasn't, this wasn't the only reason why we went out to bid.
I understand, I know.
It's certainly a factor that we'll look at as we review the bids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I believe it is. Okay, so I guess I will give the Planning Committee report. The Planning Committee met November 1, 2018. It was a meeting of the whole, so that all of the board members basically attended. And the purpose of the meeting was for us to sort of revisit the, where we, where we've been in terms of the facilities master plan and to try to get an idea of where we were as a board in terms of what we want to try to focus on and, and what our efforts are going to be going forward. And we had a really, I think, a really good conversation about, you know, sort of what's important, what we feel is the most important. Mr. Oris was there, Town Council Chairman. He was, you know, really helpful. And we are, I, you know- And we are, I, you know, the consensus of the board still is that the right first step is a six to eight middle school. So, you know, that was a good thing to revisit and make sure we were all on the same page with that. You know, next steps are going to be for Mr. Solan to, you know, meet with the town manager, to talk about, you know, sort of options that might help us, you know, move forward. And then ultimately, we will schedule a meeting with the town council to get their input as well. So, you know, there's nothing more to report right this moment, but that, that is the direction that I think we, as a board, intend to move in. So that was that meeting and that's the end of that particular report. Any questions? And Mr. Grippo?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I thought that the planning meeting was very productive. I thought we had a good conversation. And I think that any member of the town who wishes to get a really good understanding of kind of where our heads at on this issue, they should read the, the, the notes to this planning meeting. Because I thought, I don't know who did them, but they were, Sean, was it you? They were excellent. That was as, as good as they can get without being an actual recording. So thank you for that, Sean. And you will be missed, by the way. I, you know, I haven't had a chance to comment on that yet. So congratulations in your new position. I'm sure you're gonna do great there. But yeah, so for anyone who is very interested in kind of where our starting point is for facilities improvements, I think this is a great way for, for you to know where our starting point is.
Can I, can I add on?
Mr. Perugini?
I thought the notes were phenomenal. I was not at the meeting, but after reading through them, I felt like I was. And no, not sugarcoating, very well done. I love the detail. As we move forward with this, I will tell you, a lot of the feedback I still get from when we first presented the proposal to the town council back in the public meetings. Well, I'm sure we'll talk about it at future planning meeting, but if, as members of the public read through these notes and go through and look at the rationale, the, the facts behind the new middle school, and you're wondering, well, what else did we look at in terms of renovate is new, renovate in place, what those costs were, because I still get questions to this day, well, what else do we look at? And while we're spending a lot of time on the middle schools, absolutely, we'll talk more about that. I'm more than happy to sit down with anybody that wants to go through what else we looked at. I'm sorry, any other board member will as well. There's a lot of detail there. But hopefully in the future, when we get to a point where this is getting more traction, we should have some sessions with the public, talk about what we actually looked at and why this was a better option. Not just for economic, I'm sorry, for the educational spec, but the costs and some limitations to buildings. A lot of those questions were raised over and over again. And I would like to get information out there, it would help. But overall, I thought it's a good first step and looking forward to move this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Perugini. Anyone else have any comments? I would also like to remind people that the whole facilities master plan is, you know, available online on our website. And that gives you a whole lot of detail about, you know, what, what was considered and what, you know, sort of how that all evolved and the analysis of our buildings. And it's, it's worth a read if you can plow through it. So that is the end of the planning committee report, I believe. Hang on for just a minute, Ms. Vadi. Ms. Vadi, do you have a report from policy?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you. So before I start, mine's gonna be a little bit lengthy. I'm gonna try to do my best to keep it short and brief, but if anyone has any questions, let me know. But before I start, I want to just really say thank you to Ms. Sobel, Mr. Grippo, Mr. Parkers definitely, Ms. Jazinski and Mr. Solan for all the work on the policies. We've done a lot of work in the past few months and I appreciate all the time and work that's gone into this. So let me start by just talking about the policies that we reviewed for a second reading. So these were already discussed at our last meeting, so I'm not really gonna go into them. I'm just gonna read the title of the policy so everyone's aware of what it is. If anyone has any questions about it, let me know. There have been no changes made from the first to the second readings, as far as I recall. Okay, so number one for the second reading was policy number six one four two entitled Instruction, Basic Instruction. And I'm not gonna go into details on that. Number, second one was policy number five one two five point one one that dealt with students and health medical records. Next policy for the second reading was five one four four point four regarding student discipline, physical exercise. Next policy for second reading was six one six one point three Instruction, Comparability of Services for Title One Schools. And the final policy we reviewed for a second reading was six one seven one point two Instruction, Preschool Students with Disabilities. We also then reviewed for first reading, and this is in our November meeting, we reviewed for a first reading Policy four one one two point five slash four two one two point five, Personnel Certified slash Non-Certified Security Check Finger Printing. Changes were made to this policy due to changes in state legislation regarding criminal justice information. So in comparing our current policy to Cabe's post, most recent policy, Mr. Parker said the administration's recommendation is to replace our current policy with Cabe's updated policy and to adopt the regulation. And we did do that, so we moved forward with that first reading. Second one was one three three zero, Community Relations, Use of School Facilities. And thank you to Mr. Maciana for attending that meeting. And he explained that there were a few updates to this policy to bring it up to date with current law. And he explained the policy revisions. And all of these policies are on our website, so I'm not gonna read what those specific revisions were. But there also is a current regulation and fee schedule. And he discussed that with us and went through it with us, and we didn't make any changes to that. Mr. Maciana said that he was gonna be discussing that further with town council and have further meetings. And I think we're gonna jointly move forward in some way with the regulations and, and the fee schedule. Next, we looked at five one one four, Student Suspension and Expulsion Due Process, five one three one, Student Conduct, five one four four, Student Discipline. For all three of these policies, we just had to add an appendix to the policy. It's the same appendix for all of them, and this was recommended by Cabe. And the appendix outlines procedures that shall be followed in concert with the policies by the district personnel pertaining to the required provision of an alternative educational opportunity for expelled students eligible for such programs. The next policy we went through was five one four one point four, Students Reporting of Child Abuse, Neglect and Sexual Assault. The only changes to this policy were to add the word school counselor and licensed behavior analyst to the list of mandated reporters. Next, we reviewed policy five one four five point five one one, Students Exploitation, Sexual Harassment. Mr. Parkers introduced this mandatory new policy and regulation, which states that the Cheshire Public Schools shall implement the Sexual Abuse and Assault Awareness and Prevention Program identified or developed in compliance with state statute. He explained that we have practiced this policy but did not previously have a written policy in place. So now we do, or we will. Next was six one four six, Instruction, Graduation Requirements. Mr. Parkers reviewed the changes to this policy due to changes in legislation. Commencing with the graduating class of twenty twenty-three, and for each graduating class thereafter, twenty-five credits will be required to graduate. Currently, students must have twenty-three credits to graduate. The committee will continue to review this policy. Oh, I'm sorry. On that date, we decided to continue to review the policy before we brought it forward for a second, for a first reading. And in our meeting of December third, Dr. Gad and Ms. Katucci from Cheshire High School came and were kind enough to explain to us a little bit more about what the requirements are gonna be and how we're gonna actually institute a policy that's a little bit broader. And what they're gonna do in their instructional manual is gonna probably give some recommended guidelines as to how students might be able to fill some, some of the graduation requirements. And while Ms., Dr. Gad and Ms. Katucci were present, we also discussed or I requested that we look at a potential new policy in compliance with Connecticut General Statute ten twenty, two twenty G, which requires each Board of Education to establish a written policy concerning weighted grading, weighted grading for honor and advanced placement classes. So that is something that they're gonna be looking at for us and bringing to us at another date. All right, going back to our meeting on, I'm sorry, this is so boring. On November fifth, six one, oh, we also reviewed policy for the first time as six one seven one Instruction, Special Education. Mr. Parkers reviewed this revised policy with the committee. Changes to this policy were recommended to Cabe, by Cabe, due to changes in legislation. And the new wording of this policy is online, so I'm not gonna read that right now. So our next meeting, December third, we reviewed once again, as I said, the graduation requirements and the weighted grading we spoke about. We also reviewed Policy six one four two point one zero one, Instruction, Student Wellness. And this policy is being changed to require the Health and Wellness Committee to meet, instead of the current requirement of four times per year, to meet three times per year. I think that's what they're doing now, and they just wanted the policy to be in compliance with what the practice is. And there were no other suggestions or changes suggested. So we did move that forward for first reading. Next, we discussed five one four one point two one, Students Administering Medication. Recommendations to this policy are being made due to changes in state law. And once again, those, it's a little lengthy, so I'm not gonna read it all now, but that's also online. Next is five one one three, Attendance Excused Absences and Truancy. Again, this policy is being updated to reflect the State Department of Education's Chronic Absentee, Absentees and Prevention and Intervention Plan pursuant to Public Act number one eighteen dash one eighty-two. And once again, the revisions are a little long, so I'm not gonna read them, but they are online. And all the board members should have them. Next is four one one eight point one one two slash four two one eight point one one two, Personnel Sexual Harassment. This revised policy and a new regulation are being recommended by the administration. The changes to this policy and new regulation bring it up to date with current laws and requirements. Next, we reviewed four one one two point eight, Personnel Certified slash Non-Certified Nepotism. So this is a policy that we currently have that we asked to review and we made, we made some revisions to this policy and actually updated it to be in line with Cabe's core policy. And once again, the changes that we made, I'm not gonna read, it's a little lengthy, but all the board members have it and it's online. And we also asked for some more information just on how this policy might affect our current staff. And Mr. Solan's gonna get back to us on that. Next is four one one one, Personnel Recruitment and Selection. Mr. Parkers explained that the Cabe recommended changes to this policy are to extend from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. And that's basically that. Next. So I don't think I need to go over some of these. All right, so basically, after we reviewed those policies, we reviewed again some of the policies we discussed on November fifth for our first reading and didn't really make any changes. So what I talked about is already, we've already discussed. So I think that's it. So I think I have brought forward and discussed all the policies that we have discussed over the last couple of months. I know that was a lot. Thank you for bearing with me. Any questions?
Not really a question, but good job getting through all of those in a succinct yet informative matter.
I thank Ms. Jazinski for my notes on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I commend the policy committee for the huge amount of work that they've been doing. So it's impressive. Okay, moving on to the formation of the calendar committee. So it is my pleasure to announce that Mr. Adam Grippo will be the board representative on the calendar committee. The first meeting will be held on December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty P.M. in the Dod Library. I will also be sitting on that committee as well as superintendent. And I guess there are, you know, representatives of a number of different organizations that will also be part of that committee. And at the December thirteenth meeting, the two thousand nineteen twenty proposed calendar will be discussed and formally recommended for adoption. And the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one proposed calendar will be drafted. I'm not sure what... Any questions? Anybody have anything to add to that? Okay, that's it. Are there any other standing committees that would like to report to the board? Seeing none. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the Board of Education this evening? Come on up, Mr. Bestar. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jack Bestar. I'm officially a John, but I call by Jack. Forty-five Dress Road. As always, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I sincerely hope that you find what I emailed to all of you very helpful and informative and not very presumptuous on my part. I just feel that it's really important to, to be provided with a differing point of view on some of the topics that are near and dear to the hearts of many of our citizens as well as to you and the teachers and the educators on the committee. I, I feel very, very strongly that, that you may not be receiving a fair and balanced, transparent and comprehensive perspective on this very contentious topic in education. The role of technology in education is far from a settled issue. Yet you will be asked to expend thousands of dollars on e-textbooks and six-year licensure contracts while the effectiveness of digital on-screen learning has yet to be established. And you will soon be asked to move forward on a proposed definition of personalized learning without, in my opinion, any semblance of a fair, honest, transparent and comprehensive investigation of this controversial and massively complicated topic and the ramifications that are applied within that. I am very frustrated by the fact that I don't feel that the Personalized Learning Task Force has had an opportunity to hear and read or, or discuss differing viewpoints on this topic. I'm gonna just, that's gonna be my statement as far as that, I find it extremely frustrating. And that's why I keep coming back and trying to fill a void that I feel is missing in this discussion. On another subject, I'd like to ask, has a search committee for the assistant superintendent been set up yet? And how will it be, how will it be chosen? I know that Mr. Solan said that there was a plan moving forward for late spring or late winter, early spring to start that committee. I'm just wondering how the people, who, who and how the people will be chosen to be on that search committee? Is that answerable or...
Just need to make sure that the boss wants me to respond.
No, I hear you, I hear you.
That hasn't been resolved yet, Mr. Bestar.
Okay, okay.
We haven't determined that yet.
Okay, and lastly, I, I did congratulate Mr. Parkers at a previous meeting on his new, new appointment. And I hope that even though we've differed on some issues in the past year or so, I certainly hope that he, he's, well, I wanna say, he's always been very courteous and professional in our dealings. And, um, I hope that he does well in Windsor Locks. I grew up in Windsor, Connecticut, which is nearby, so I hope you treat my nearby neighbor very well.
Thank you, Mr. Bestar. Mr. Perugini?
Jack, I just want to apologize, I, I saw your email come across today.
Oh, yeah.
And I, when I got here tonight, I was scrambling to find it, I don't have it, so I apologize. I will read it at the next...
I meant to say, I, I made a hard copy.
I knew you would, but I will, I will read it to the record at the next meeting.
No, that's perfectly fine, you know, I really did it for, um, I, I hope people will read it and, and learn from it.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board of Education?
Good evening. Jamie Ferguson, one-oh-five Copper Beach Drive in Cheshire. What I wanted to bring up was, um, the planning committee and the facilities master plan. And I know you commented on the meeting that was in November. My takeaway is, I was present at the meeting, but as it was a committee meeting, the public doesn't make a comment. The takeaway I've had from the process in the past and still today is that I think that there should be a collaborative group, um, between the town council and the Board of Ed, like a task force or some type of joint commission or committee that comes together when you decide to go forward with whatever the choice is for rehabbing the facilities. And I just wanted to put that on the record as a request, um, to seriously consider kind of starting as a unit with them because they're, they are going to be so critical in the end in, um, authorizing the spending and getting it to referendum. And I think the, the real, the only real hurdle from the last time in not getting to referendum is, um, in my opinion, from my experience, was feeling like that some members of the community just, even though we'd been working on it for two years, for whatever reason, we hadn't communicated that effectively enough to everyone to bring enough people into the process. So they felt like, they just didn't know all of the details and how vetted it was. So if we could, however you choose to go forward, um, consider having a, a more open group with different, um, a larger body of the community involved just so that that is more transparent, the process of how the decisions were made. And that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, good evening, Rob Oris, seventy-one Autumn Court. Uh, and on behalf of the town council and certainly myself, Ms. Hellreich, I want to thank you for all of your time and commitment as chairperson of this, uh, Board of Education. I certainly know what it takes and the level of commitment, uh, to do that job, and, um, it's a lot. And so, uh, you know, I, I, I'm sad that you're leaving, but I know you're not really leaving. You're still going to be around, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure that you knew from me that I certainly appreciate your role and all that you did. Uh, I personally felt like you and I had a good working relationship, and I'm hoping that that will continue uh, in this capacity as not being chair. Uh, I certainly look forward, Ms. Fabiana, to be working with you as the new chair and Ms. Harrigan as the vice chair. So congratulations to you both in those new roles. Uh, and certainly, Mr. Parkers, I would be remiss if I did not say congratulations to you as well. What can you say? It's a great role that you're accepting. So, you know, obviously, it sounds like you're going to be missed. We're going to miss you, we've had limited interaction from the council's perspective, but whatever interaction we did had, you were very professional, and we certainly appreciated that. So it sounds like you're going to be, uh, very missed by this group of people and, but it's a great opportunity, so we wish you the best. So, uh, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oris. Ms. Hellreich.
Thank you, Mr. Oris. I really appreciate your taking the time to come tonight. Thank you.
Okay, um, the chair has no old business. Does any other member have any old business? No. Chair has no new business. So, does any other member have any new business? Seeing none. Ms. Hellreich, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Um, I moved to adjourn into executive session to include Superintendent Solan and Chief Operating Officer Vincent Maciana to discuss union negotiations and a personnel item with no action to follow.
Is there a second, Ms. Sobel? Any discussion, anything like that? No, so, the, uh, motion is to adjourn it to executive session to include Superintendent Solan and Chief Operating Officer Vincent Maciana to discuss union negotiations and the personnel item with no action to follow. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you.